Okay, well, it's nine o'clock on April the 10th, 2023. We'll call this regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order. And we'll start with a prayer from Brother John Hines out of Taulco Fars. Brother John?
.....................................................................................................................................................................
Number one on the agenda today is public comments or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 in the Texas Open Meetings Act. Tap it. That one dead too.
You just have to speak right into it.
Broke now.
Hi, my name's Nathan Choyas, Director and Director for the Non Pleasant Economic Development Corporation. And had to do miscommunication at half the last couple meetings. But we'll try to be on the next meeting. I'm sure we're... We get that meeting dead on Thursday for the next meeting. And I wanted to just kind of do a firm, if possible, kind of let you guys know how big the research is. Because we're a bit aware of some of our projects that we're working on. And we have a few that have asked for kind of a statement from the local tax entities. And we're approaching for a very specific project due in the city. And so hopefully next round, we can talk a little more in detail about that. There's kind of one idea we have a real history of working with the county and the city to make projects happen to bring jobs to the region. And to make this place more business friendly than we compete with other counties surrounding us regionally. And you know, kind of what I would call a workforce labor shedded, about sixty minutes back then. And so, so that was in the long, because they're straight to Texas. So those types of things. And then the second thing I would like to pay for the Council's consideration, I'm sorry, Commissioners', consideration. You can say the Council, but the Commissioners' consideration is the use of both 381 agreements for counties and the traditional kind of tax abatement. And what that means is, and so there's a subset of two for that. One, just as you consider, I know that there's some kind of opposition to those types of things. And it's really important to understand you're competing against other communities that are doing similar things in different states. And it's going to be much better, in my opinion, to get a percentage, fifty percent, eighty cents, seventy percent over a term of something rather than zero. If those bad investments make it here. And so, but also one, I don't know that the county and the city have it also, it's a fairly concept of giving a 381 versus the traditional tax abatement. There are just considerations we can lay out next time, what the differences are. But one is pretty much you evade it upfront. They only pay, let's say, say this fifty percent, they only pay fifty percent. Or, but the 381, 380 version is more of a, I want to reverse it. They pay the full hundred percent of their taxes and then reverse, you know, your... Very, very version of how those work. So just wanted to present that to you. And Council, I'm sorry, in the open session or public comment section, just to let you know coming to you guys. And I'd like to be able to name you individually and kind of let you know some of the things that we're working on and all kind of rest of that. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming, Nate. Anyone else wanting to speak in the open comments? Okay, so on to number two. Considering possibly approve the minutes from the March 27th, 2023 special meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make a motion, we approve those minutes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number three, presentation by CASA of Titus Camp and Morris Counties along with Northeast Texas Child Advocacy Center with possible action on this. And Mr. Crystal Hosmer. You may want to pull that microphone down just a little bit. I do think it is working, so there you go.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge Cooper, as many Commissioners and guests. Thank you for allowing me to share the information about Non Pleasant Economic Development Month. CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties is one of seventy-three programs across the state. It works to ensure all children placed in the foster care system to be used in a life path to safety, stability, nurture if they need to drop. We recruit and train volunteers, members of our communities who are called CASA Volunteers, court-appointed special advocates to speak up in court for the best interest of the children to ensure that they are placed in a safe, permanent, and stable home as quickly as possible. A district judge in your county may appoint a specially trained CASA volunteer and an attorney to be the guardian of life for child or siblings in a CPS case. Each time a specially trained volunteer is appointed to a case, it saves Titus County tax payers money. One year of CASA advocacy costs less than one month in foster care. These volunteers volunteer at the time. Their recruitment efforts, their advocacy, they do everything that is required of them to speak up for these children. CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties has served children in Titus County for another year. Since its beginning, excepting its first case, when I'll cover the parts, twenty thirteen. CASA's contribution to Titus County in 2022. When we do not have a CASA volunteer, we serve one case, which it does have. We have staff members that build up all those shoes. Seven hundred and eighty-six staff hours served children in Titus County in 2022. Three hundred and ten volunteer hours served children in Titus County for 2022. Each volunteer that we have traveled two thousand five hundred and thirty-three miles for Titus County children in the foster care system in 2022. CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties served one hundred and sixteen kids. If you notice the blue pinwheels on the courthouse lawn, each one of those pinwheels represents a child that CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties served this past year. Forty-two abused and abducted children were paid strictly out of Titus County this past year. Twenty of the one hundred and sixteen children that CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties served, cases were closed. Any of those children were united with their parents, which is always something that we shoot for, that's our goal, is to help that those children get to go home. Then of course, there are the cases that the children are not able to go home with none of their parents. Two of those twenty children were adopted. Five of those twenty children were placed with a legal guardian. And two of those children were transferred to another jurisdiction and unfortunately three of those children aged out. They did not have a permanent home when they aged out. That does happen. We hope that we can offer that these children stay in here, they stay in care up until they have somebody to give... Have been in the system for so long that they just want to have a normal life and they don't want to be a foster child anymore. Out of the hundred percent of children that CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties serves, because we do, every child that is removed in Titus Camp and Morris Counties CASA serves those children. Nineteen percent of those Titus County children were just five years and younger. Twelve percent of the Titus County children were six years to eleven years old. Six percent of Titus County children in care were ages twelve to eighteen. Thirty-six CASA volunteers served one hundred and one children in 2022. Fifty of those children were served by staff. Some of those cases that were served by staff were served very, very short, in a very short time period. As we've had children that were either placed with a legal guardian when, at the end of the year, during the fourteen day period. Or we had children that was placed with a father who was out of town here within fourteen days of being born. CASA Titus Camp and Morris Counties is also requesting that Judge Cooper be compliant that April is a Child Abuse Prevention Month for the month. To give you a 366 on that. Just in Texas alone, for 2022, fifty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-four children were victims of abuse in their life. That includes one hundred and sixteen children in Titus and in Morris Counties that are served. Nine thousand five hundred and ninety CASA volunteers spoke up for the best interest of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-four children. You're probably thinking these numbers sound a little off. Why aren't they more? Sorry, I've got a call. We do not have enough CASA volunteers to be able to serve these children. And it's not just our counties. We recruit within your counties, we set up base community events, we go out to businesses, we speak to businesses, we try to recruit volunteers within your county to serve these kids. We are asking that anybody that is listening today, that if you feel that you know somebody or you think yourself could be a good person to serve these kids that we work with, we would love to sit down and speak with you more about that. To be able to be that one standing person in that child's life that is a CASA person. As these children do go through several different caseworkings, several different things, they don't build relationships very well, but they can look for CASA.
Before I make a motion, I just want to let you all know how much we do appreciate you all and all the work that you do and the timeless hours that you spend making an impact on those young children's lives, keeps them from not being in front of me later on. It makes a big, big difference. I know that volunteering is going down as we fight that with our volunteer fire departments and everything is going that way. And we just want you to know how much we appreciate you. Appreciate you, other two ladies coming to be with her today, but mainly for our children. And at the end of the day, we all need to step up and try to help with our children. So we do appreciate you all being here today. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that April be considered Child Abuse Prevention Month in Titus County. Second. Get a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously.
May I approach?
You sure might. Just a one. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Y'all have a nice day.
If it's okay, Judge Kent, Ms. Lauren, the Child Advocacy Center is here, she wants to speak.
Most, I'm sorry, I may have cut you off. I'm sorry, I didn't know you wanted to speak. Yes, you may speak.
Thank you, Crystal, and thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I just want to take a minute and talk about how the Child Advocacy Center works with CASA, how we partner in the face of community efforts to serve these children. The Child Advocacy Center is based in Wentzboro, but we cover eight counties, including Titus County. We've been around since nineteen ninety-eight to celebrate our twenty-five year anniversary. We serve five hundred and fifty-seven children, according to sixty-one of whom are from Titus County alone. And how we work together with CASA is we work closely with law enforcement, child protective services, district attorneys and prosecutors. And the children come to our center first before they're ever go through the process to receive a forensic interview. Where law enforcement, CPS, and prosecution watch the interview so that the child is interviewed one time in forensic setting with a professionally trained individual so that it reduces trauma to the child. And that they are able to tell their superior parents to professionally train people. And from there, we work on prevention awareness and then healing through providing counseling services. And we work mostly with CASA in order to make that happen. So most of CASA that children may serve, we also serve. So thank you all very much, your support. Awareness and prevention is important in Child Abuse Prevention in Northeast Texas, and now prevention is making great time today.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Number four on the agenda will be the presentation of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service recognizing National Volunteer Week featuring the local master gardeners. And Callie is here, I believe. There she is.
Thank you guys for having us today. For those who don't know, my name is Callie Zeller. I'm the county extension agent for agriculture and natural resources here in Titus County. And today I have with me Michael Lulu in Hollins, who's also the county extension agent for family and community help. And I have several master gardeners here with me today. And next week is National Volunteer Week, and we just wanted to take this time to recognize some of the hard work that they do for the members of our community. So these are volunteers through the Texas A&amp;M University System with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension. And they are an asset to land and ice programs and to the local community here. I have a very rewarding job in that I get to work with a number of different people in a number of different disciplines, whether that's 402, advice, agri culture producers, homeowners, gardeners. And so these master gardeners are a great help to our community. They are trained with fifty hours of classroom instruction and then they give back twenty-five volunteer hours to their community. And what they do is they take our research-based information that's conducted at Texas A&amp;M University and extend that to the general public. So that it's reliable, useful knowledge for our community members. I've had the pleasure of working with them this summer at the Ignite Youth Club, working on school gardens. I've had the pleasure of working with them through college with youth and then just helping folks with their home issues, whether that's figuring out warranty issues. So it's a pleasure to work with them. It's quite a group. It's composed of Titus, Franklin, and King counties. I was talking to Sharon earlier, and we have a little over eighty members with our new intern group that we've just certified. And they donated almost six thousand hours back for our community this year. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Sharon, how does it come up? She's going to give a little presentation on what they do for our community, but we really, really appreciate all that they do for us. And just wanted to take some time for a minute.
First, I want to thank the Commissioners for what you do for us. Some of you have heard this before, but we realize that we aren't unusual as a garden group and that we have a facility for our meetings, we have a place to have our gardens, and not many groups have that. Many of them have to go outside, and we're very aware of that and we're very grateful. You know that we maintain the gardens and extensions, but we also do a few other things. We often have out-of-town groups coming through. A couple of years ago, we had forty people from Arkansas on their way to Dallas, Harberrio, and they chose to stop and see what we do also. We have scout groups, we have other master gardener groups, we have life skills class from one of the health members coming frequently. The Native Plant Society is going to meet with us. They also have members from our area. Callie has already mentioned that we went to Ignite this summer, and several of us went a few times to work with them. Let me just say here, that facility is extremely well-run and it's a passionate, thriving community and very active area. We donate to rich charities at Christmas, we donate to the foundations of local schools to help fund projects that the teachers think of that would enhance learning of your students, but that is not in the budget for their regular program. It's a competitive selection, and so we're happy to do that. Due to COVID, we were unable to have this next event for about three years. But in October of last year, we resumed the activity we call "Pallabray." This is a field trip for fourth graders, for fourth graders who come to the extension grounds. We give them a program of activities that enhance or help teach the required state mandates for fourth grade science. We divide them into small groups, first over two days with different students each day. This past year, we had a hundred students and twenty-six teachers over the course of two days. They rotate about every twenty-five minutes to a new activity, so everybody gets to participate in everything. Many of the groups were allowed to choose to compete on the extension spot. We had Non Pleasant Jackal Field, and we invited Parks Blood, they did not participate. It was past year that we intend to do the crosswind sometime next year. We cooperated with the Texas Board of Agriculture Service in tree giveaway for the past two, the year, there's been an hour of trees in the mountain. You know, we run our program through our sale. We had our most recent sale the week of March 27th. We propagated lots of water sales, eighty to ninety percent. We have two days of online ordering, and then they can kind of pick up their merchandise and also shop at our roomhouse. We have three hundred online orders. We sold three thousand plants on the online sale. And Friday and Saturday, we're over and do the shopping, three thousand. We sold about six thousand plants. And then we made the six thousand dollars that we're helping you with. We use our funds to maintain the gardens, our activities, our out-of-town speakers. We give scholarships at ATCC and DCC for students who are concentrating on agriculture. We also contribute to their work, which allows students who have financially to work for different programs at the college. A large part of what I learned is we stop and help different schools against this from the WTCC, which is also very valuable. We have a lot of repeat businesses, a lot of repeat business to our sale, people help us open community that might sense good. The primary development management goal is to teach about agriculture, but we also choose to teach and to serve the community and the house that I talked about. And we greatly appreciate the work that you allow us to do in our community.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
They should be working on y'all's building so that the roof doesn't leak anymore, hopefully after this week.
Well, like Sharon said, we just want to say thank you so much for your support, complete support. Like she said, the facilities that we have are absolutely second to none, and we greatly appreciate that. It allows us to do the work to serve our community. So we thank you, and we wanted to take some time today to recognize your volunteers and thank you for all of us.
Appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. Thank you. Thank you, Callie. I'm going to move that down because I want you. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Callie.
Number five on the agenda, considering possibly approve the resolution of appointing Judge Kent Cooper to the Architex Council of Government Board. That's somebody's... One of us has to be on it or...
Make that motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Yes, it carries unanimously. Number six, considering possibly approve the purchase of a new 2024 white Mack Gold Dog Pinnacle from Texacana Mack Sales Incorporated through Sorthwell Purchasing Co-op for $135,000. And let Joe D. speak on that. Thank you, ladies, we appreciate y'all. Appreciate your help.
This truck's not just for precinct two, this is a shared truck with all precincts.
You'll hold up, we'll let them get out. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you all for coming. We're all in the courtroom.
Thank you all. Then we were down to two. All right, Joe D., you want to speak on that truck?
Like I was saying, this truck is not just for precinct two, it is a shared, all precincts will use it. And the only reason it's got my name on it is because I just done the paperwork on it.
Also, I also want to mention on that, it is a new truck, and it'll be a while getting delivery on it. But y'all saved us some money by going. People look at it and say, well, you bought a new truck. Well, they bought this new truck less than what it was going to cost us to get a used truck. I just want to say, I appreciate the Commissioners watching over our money and doing what's best for us, even though it is a new truck. We did save some money on that and what we had budgeted for that.
Well, they was wanting for like four hundred and fifty thousand miles on a truck, they was seventy thousand dollars for.
So.
Somebody else's headache.
Yeah, y'all did a good job on that, in my opinion, so.
I'd like to make a motion to purchase.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, considering approve the purchase of a tractor and mower from United Ag and Turf through Sorthwell Purchasing Co-op for $62,861.86. And once again, this will be with Joe D.
This is something that we really need in our precinct because we've just got one mower tractor. We've got over a hundred and something miles of road to mow. And it's something that somehow or another, all I had was one, and it's something I've really got to buy, so.
Get a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number eight, considering possibly accept the donation of a truck, 1999 year model, five fifty Ford, originally titled the Winfield Volunteer Fire Department, transferred to Sugar Hill in 2014. Dana, you want to speak on that?
This is the truck that we got turned back in and we took it in and, you know, it's a good, make a good pull truck because, you know, unless anybody else, but you know, consider it would, like I said, you know, it'd make us... We've had our pull truck go down and then had to borrow from precinct one and everything. And like I said, I'd like to make it a pull truck instead of having to purchase one.
Get a motion on that?
I make a motion, we accept it.
We got two motions. We got a motion by Commissioner Parchman and a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number nine on the agenda is considering possibly approve the request from the City of Taulco Volunteer Fire Department to increase their funding by $500 per month to cover insurance costs. Hollis, you here to speak on that, I'm assuming?
Doing good, Hollis.
Good morning.
Those of you who remember the name of Robert Harper, Representative, the only one that probably doesn't remember it, it'll be Mr. Mitchell, I mentioned years ago.
Who are you? What's your name again, sir?
What's your name?
You want that idiot's.
Now, what I'm here today for, the city has asked me to come before the Commissioners' Court, add me a cop fire agreement. They don't want to change it any way, shape, form, or fashion, so we're... They don't want to change it any way, shape, form, or fashion. Everything's fine in our contract. We're giving it. I have it highlighted in orange for you. It says the city, which is referred to Talco, asks the county to notify them whenever an increase in funding is paid to the county fire departments so that all departments are equally funded. That was done earlier because we were at sixteen hundred dollars a month. It was raised to seventeen hundred. It was brought to our kitchen that incorrect, I'm wrong, but I believe with the county currently pays the other departments' insurance for their vehicles. We do, okay. So that's all we're asking and we've asked a five hundred dollar increase. The only reason we're asking for that, we don't know what the other county departments are doing, but according to our T M L insurance, currently the city's paying about five hundred dollars a month for our fire equipment, which is, we use it again. This is where we get the five hundred dollars.
Barbara, will we be, just to, if, if we're not paying their insurance at this time?
No. They hadn't been for, since first of January, is that right?
So we could, we could pay their insurance and leave, leave them the same as all the other volunteer fire departments? Without going up, we could pay their insurance without raising theirs so that everybody stays the same. I want everybody the same.
Yes, sir. We increased, we increased what we're paying directly to the volunteer fire departments by five hundred dollars a month. So he's asking for the same five hundred dollars. Is that, is that my understanding?
I do know that I pay the other departments. The only reason we ask for five hundred is that's what our insurance costs to the city. So we're just asking if whatever the county's paying, we'd like to get the same so that we're all equal. So in other words, if you look at the numbers, it's seventeen hundred dollars a month. Y'all, y'all currently paying Talco twenty thousand four hundred, if I'm correct on that. So if you raise that by five hundred a month, that would get you to twenty-six four, which would change the, the number I've got highlighted in yellow to the commissioners' court. So.
Well, I guess what I.
That's what I was asking. I don't know what the county pays, so we're really going.
We currently pay all the insurance for the other volunteer fire departments. They, they have this, it's through V F I S and we pay that every year. We've been for quite some time. I don't know, Talco has not been part of that agreement. It's been locked out since.
If we follow.
Because I got a file under.
The city requires their own insurance for all their, with.
This will require a budget amendment, but it's not a pleasure of the court. You know, and we are paying those for all the other volunteer fire departments.
Thank you, Barbara.
So if y'all consider that, I guess my next question, because I'll have to tell the city, you know, what's going on with that. They don't want to change the contract, but if you choose to change the contract, I've got it highlighted in yellow, which basically dates, and there would be a new signature page. If you would, and you may have come up with that.
Is that what we do with the others, just sign a contract with them?
If, if that's a pleasure of the court, I do want to tell you that their contract does not require the reporting that the other volunteer fire departments' contracts require. However, they graciously agree to send us that information. Their reports are timely. They are correct as best I can tell. They've done, they've gone above and beyond is what I'm saying.
I'd make a motion then to do that.
The city, I represent the city, not the fire department on this, has to report back to the council, but they don't want to change our contract.
Contract, contract will stay the same and my motion would be just to add the five hundred to it, but it won't be to the city. It will be to the fire department because we don't pay the city. Is that right, Barbara?
No, we have, we pay the city.
We pay the city directly to them.
Yes, sir. It would go straight to, it would go straight to the city.
No, no.
The city manages our money.
No, no, no amendment to the contract then, other than the going up.
I, I know, but we have highlighted in yellow.
That's what the total year.
This is the, the man.
Oh.
And the, the only other thing that would be changed would be the date if they wanted to do their contract.
I see.
And the signature page.
Do y'all have a copy of these?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming what we do, Ms. Hollis, on that is wait till after the May election before y'all get your new mayor so we're not.
We have, we have, our prepared position will change in that.
Right.
So.
You know.
I mean, we're good with leaving it like this and it's, the date has been penciled in before on the second page in yellow. Right, we change it to October that year, but.
The reason that'd be, that'd be our budget at time so that way we could stay on the same budget every year. I'm assuming is why he did that. Is that right, Barbara?
We changed it throughout. I mean, we've made other changes throughout. We've not always waited until the budget.
But I'm assuming that's why they've got October on here with Brian scratching it out.
I, I prefer that we go ahead and retype it and get a nice clean copy. There's no change, we do dates and make it clean for future.
So if y'all want to do that, what, what they, we want the contract to be effective, which would be the, what I have highlighted in yellow, the top of the page, and I'll have the city draw another document.
Assuming that'd be the Oc- October the first, two thousand twenty-three.
We don't want to do it today with the court.
We'll have to do it today to, to change the money, though. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Change the money, we can do it today.
So it'll have to be April the tenth, have to be April the tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So you want to change, you want to change it this day?
Yes, sir. To make it affect today. That way we can go ahead and pay them. The way we're gonna, I guess we need to back up and vote on that and then we can change that date because if they don't vote on it, then ain't no need changing that date, so.
Nice if we want to, for all days, I can type a copy of pencil in the dates and then I'll have Jackie type up another date and the city council decided to that and then we bring it back to your office or something.
I've, I've got a motion out right now to approve that five hundred dollars and if we get a second on that, we'll vote. We've got a second on that by Commissioner Partsman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously.
One question. Y'all want that to start from this month, five hundred dollars in April.
Right. That's when we're gonna move that date. Now we'll move that date, Mr. Hollis, to April the tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And if you'll get Jackie to type that all up and get them to sign it, then I'll be more than glad to sign it with them. Sorry about that. I had to go back a little differently, so.
Y'all got any questions for me?
You gonna be the next mayor?
Who's the next mayor?
You gonna be the next mayor?
If y'all hear me running for anything, it'll be for the candidates.
Relax. Thank you.
I'm capable of that here. Thank you.
Who's, who's gonna do that? Who's taking it over? You got, you have election or you know who's gonna take it over or what?
Go after the mayor.
Yeah.
He'd be off the election.
Oh, is he?
We have two candidates.
Okay. You and Kendall, you and Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Hollis. Thank you, Hollis. Appreciate y'all. Number ten, considering possibly approving, giving Wood Air Conditioning their thirty-day notice of canceling our service agreement contract. Reason that's been brought up, there's, I just don't feel like they're doing everything that's on the contract and I've been getting some different charges and stuff and don't believe that, that they're doing what we all agreed to do.
I'm making a motion, we do this.
Got a motion by Commissioner Partsman to cancel our agreement with them.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number eleven, approve oral and written reports of the county officials, which we did get those sent, so we can approve those. Get a motion on that?
I make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the oral and written reports from the county officials.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number twelve, considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion, we approve the treasurer's report.
Got a motion by Commissioner Partsman to approve that.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number thirteen, approve the budgeted amendments. Ms. Barbara, I'll speak on those right quick.
Yes, sir. You know, from last court, we did the budget amendments, standard ones that were not related to payroll. The ones I have for today are mostly payroll related. The federal and the county judges' offices. Commissioner, you approved an increase for Ms. Walton to work for one week with James Webster. That's a total of five hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's her payroll significant. The next item is an increase to insurance proceeds. We received additional funds from TAC for the repair of the Ford Ranger. The next item is an increase in the attorney fees for commitments from fifty to a hundred dollars. That's sixty-four hundred dollars. It may not take that much, but anything that we don't use rolls back into fund balance. Last year, late, late September, we approved some body cameras and we had trouble getting those. In fact, we ordered those from two state retailers who were unable to fulfill those orders because items do finally come in in December and January, so it's fifty-six hundred and fifty-five dollar increase to security cameras. To the, next one is the county auditor, the county treasurer. The numbers are exactly the same. The funds come out of the auditor's office and to the treasurer's office for the move on the payroll function from the auditor to the treasurer. It has no impact on general county fund balance. That number is extended plus this is from February the thirteenth. Last, last court, we also did dues and bonds and then that was before the treasurer's bonds had increased, so there's three hundred and fifty dollars there for the increase in treasurer bonds. The O P C officer who's right there has had an increase in yields. He has a better more transporting. Generally, we take that from office supplies. That's what we did this time, too. The sheriff's office, several years ago, the sheriff started at my request, separating the federal inmates from other county inmates and we needed to do a two hundred dollar increase in other county, out-of-county inmate deals, just two hundred dollars within his budget. No, no impact on fund balance. And then we have an increase to TAC membership for training for county judges and commissioners. That's one at three hundred and sixty dollars. Several of the items, different kinds of trainings that we attend are reimbursed from TAC. It's a significant reimbursement. I already have the item on here for the twenty-five thousand dollars for the fire truck from the Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department to precinct three. We have an increase, twelve hundred dollars from the Bible Statistics Fund. The items were budgeted, but they were budgeted in offices and in, in Rossland to purchase a computer, which makes the requirements. Similarly to when we, when you increase this budget for training for Ms. Walton, you also upgrade training for Ms. Rossland from October through December. And then we did a true at the end of the year, it's four hundred and ninety-two dollars the net increase from what you had already approved. Related to the sheriff's commissary, we have a transfer from the canteen. The canteen toward the selling, where they sell the items and it comes into the commissary fund and there's an increase of ninety-eight hundred dollars, ninety-eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in the transfer payment from the canteen. We have an increase to legal fees for the two thousand four by the way, that's the FM seventeen thirty-five. Remember, we had some end of domain and things like that. We also then have to increase the commissary fund, the offset in front of the canteen. Those things like money. It comes in here, it goes to commissary and then the sheriff skins that. So it's three different charge entries for, for one item. And then the maintenance farm, we have an increase to the maintenance farm at thirty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. It's for a partial year for the commissioner's assistant. That, that position was filled by James Webster. Next year, we'll have to have a whole year's worth of salary that these funds are coming out of the maintenance farm fund balance and that gets to a certain level that will have to come out of the commissioner's year funds. So that's all I have at this time.
Motion to approve those amendments?
I make a motion to approve the amendments.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those budgeted amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Partsman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number fourteen, sign the pay orders and approve our payments.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Jimmy makes a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Closing comments. Commissioner Partsman?
I got it. I'm gonna bring this. I made, I see what this paper you gave us, Barbara, with the credit cards. On the number one, these cards are for emergency purchases on them. Why do they have to be for emergency only? For the credit cards that we're gonna.
I'll get back into the research and in, in the last three years, the current board has checked out sixteen times, sixteen times among all four commissioners. So what I don't want to have happen is that you use this card to buy things that you can get a purchase order for because with those purchase orders, we are required to report to the IRS. You try to pay over six hundred dollars. If you pay with a credit card, then I don't have any way to track that.
Right. No, if we use these cards, I mean, we're gonna get a purchase order anyway on these. So I mean, so.
Right. I ask you to do that.
So I'm saying, but did it have to be emergency, though, what you're saying? I mean.
I prefer that it's an emergency. I mean, here's the thing, you can call my office anytime and get a purchase order, we did less than five minutes.
Right, absolutely. So maybe if we do that, we can still use the card, right? If we do the purchase orders, we can still use the card, no matter what.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
That's, that's all.
What about it? I mean, we can use it if they're not already a vendor to Titus County.
Well, no, they need to be a vendor. They need to be a vendor. But here's the thing, if they're not a vendor and you need to make a purchase, you need to have to make that purchase.
That's what I was asking.
Only in the event of an emergency, not just because you suddenly decide, because here's the thing, we go out and we try to get everybody set up as a vendor. All the ones that you've done recently that weren't, that weren't vendors, we've done that. And I send this to you, it's on our website, you can have the vendors go there. We need a dug-in, we need those certificate of insurance that you're gonna come to our property with. That's all we need. And it's common business practice. It's not anything that I have created. That's the thing.
Ms. Snap, Ms. Snap what?